Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. Madam Chair. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry. That's pretty close. We call the meeting to order. We'll begin with a moment of prayer from Commissioner. Oh, Commissioner. I knew it was one way or the other.
We thank you for all the wonderful gifts that you can give to us in our lifetimes, starting with the gift of life. In enabling all citizens to be able to practice their faith, whatever that might be. All citizens have the right to speak freely. And all citizens have a right to participate in the process. Citizens have elected this board to trust me in our judgment. Somebody asked if you could give us all the wisdom of Solomon. We fulfill our oath of office to do the very best we can for the citizens of this county.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, I will ask a Vietnam veteran, Laszlo, would you please come up? And his dog Winston. If you would, please lead us in the flag, pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Not a problem. Glad to have you here. Thank you for being here this evening. Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample. Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Dric.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Chair will entertain a motion for that, for the approval of the agenda.
They'll move Helserman. Support Fiani.
Been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I might add here that we're doing something a little bit differently in this evening's agenda. The chair will be covering all of the first eight items. I'm sorry, all of the first 11 items. And the vice chair will handle items 12 to 15. We're going to see how that works. He's better at that than I am, and we'll see how that works. The next item on the agenda is correspondence. We have correspondence from Sheboygan, Ingham, Marquette, Marquette twice, Marquette three times, Antonagon. And the chair will entertain a motion with respect to correspondence.
I move that we vote on, accept all of these correspondence as one bundle.
Second, Smith.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Next item on the agenda is employee recognition. We have in the audience a gentleman, Andrew Teichman, is it? Teichman, thank you. And the presentation will be made by our vice chair, Commissioner Jay Dric.
Andrew, would you come out, please? About right up next to me. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the recognition award certificate and a small ceremony to present a award to Andrew Teichman for his outstanding customer service rendered to Livingston County in the fourth quarter of 2022, pursuant to our employee recognition program. The Drain Commissioner's Office has provided the following for us to understand that Andrew is a wastewater operator for the Drain Commissioner. The wastewater operator, Andrew, is responsible for operating and maintaining the county sanitary sewer treatment and collection systems, taking a lead role in system maintenance and repairs, serving as the lead responder to emergency requests on a 24-hour basis. Andrew celebrated his second anniversary of Livingston County a short time ago. We're very happy to have him as part of our team. His supervisor, this is what you'll want to remember. The supervisor said, Andrew is a selfless team player with a can-do attitude, always placing customers first, the system, and coworkers well before himself. Andrew never quits, and if he does not know the answer to a problem, he'll figure it out. Wrapping up why he deserves this recognition, the supervisor says, it's just impossible. He's so good.
Thank you so much.
If you wish to comment, say anything that's appropriate you've made, otherwise you're good. Nope, just thank you. You want to come down? Can you get everybody in? We have to squeeze together. Shall we double up? Yep. Side by side. Short guys up front.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Oh, yes, of course.
Oh, you know what? I can grab them.
The things are. You hear me?
Yes, it's on.
It's on, okay. Yeah, one of the things I wanted to mention about Andrew is something that happened not too long ago where the Heartland Water System, somebody on it, had a problem where they had a break in a valve, I think, and it was filling up their basement. And for whatever reason, Heartland's system was down for emergency calls, so they called us, and Andrew responded, got it stopped. It's not part of our system, it's part of the water system, and he got that stopped and helped her clean it up. And again, it's one of those things, it's not our system, but, you know, he did what he had to do to help her out, and it meant a lot to her because she was beside herself and thought she was going to lose her furnace and everything else. So, you know, we expect that from all the guys, but, you know, they do it with a smile, and it doesn't matter if it's 3:00 in the morning, or 2:00 in the afternoon, or Christmas morning. You know, they do that kind of job. And in fairness, if we called on Heartland, they would do the same for us. So, you know, it's one of those mutual situations, but we're proud of all of them.
Next item on the agenda is call to the public. Do we have cards, madam clerk?
We do, we do. First, we'll bring Michael Sage, DTE Energy and Commissioners. He had a business card that he left me that I will be sending a copy to each of you via email.
Good evening, everyone. I know it's been a trying couple, four or five days here since our storm through, came through on the. Okay, okay, all right, thank you. Last Wednesday, I myself just got restored the other day, too, as well. So, I live in Marion Township, and my office is right here in the Howell area, too, over at our Howell Service Center. And I just wanted to come and talk just briefly about the storm itself. So, it's turned out to be now 630,000 customers were out, out of our 3 million customers that we have, so a substantial amount, pretty concentrated, obviously, in this area. My service territory includes the thumb, and I had just a handful of phone calls for here on Tuscaloosa and Sanlaco and Lupyr County as opposed to here. The one thing that I wanted to make sure that I was able to do with you guys, and that's why I gave the secretary my business card, is we started a new, we have a quorum system that can send out a blast of information, and I'd like to get all of your emails and then be able to provide that information to you guys, so that this storm, we did two a day, 9:00 each in the morning, and then about 7:00 at night. So, progress and what was happening. I'd like you to be able to have that, so if you do have constituents that reach out to you, you have the latest information for us. So, we're going to try to improve that in terms of communication for everybody here. I'm more than happy, I know I'm just here for three minutes here, right, so I'm more than happy to come back at another time. If you had a chance to reflect and you've had issues that people have brought up, the only way we can improve it is by focusing on the areas that are the worst, right? And so, we need an address, or, you know, an address to a community, then we can figure out what the circuit is, and then we can go back from there and try to improve. So, I'm more than happy to do that. I did bring my flashlight with me today, and it wasn't because I thought we were going to run out of power and I was going to need it. I bought it, brought it because I've been with the company for a while, and my first major storm was, let's see here, July the 13th, 1995, 550,468 customers were out in that storm, right? So, this was 630 here, but I've got 19 different storms on here. They're only the, what we call catastrophic storms, right, over the 44 years that I've been with the company. And everyone seems to be a little bit unique, and this is no exception. The ice, I was told, in preparation for this, I asked, I need a good talking point, right? And I was told for a typical span, 150 foot or so between poles, half an inch of ice is what we, we found that were on the wires, is about the weight of a baby grand piano, right? So, that's about 500 pounds. So, imagine, if you will, as you drive by that span, trying to hang a piano on it somewhere and expect it to be able to stay up in the air, right? And that's what we put up with, or that's what occurred, right? And that's why we're in the spot we're in for the last four or five days. The projection is to get everybody who was in the initial 300 or 630 done today, right? We've had a few more incidences today because of some ice that's come through, but that's the current plan. So, again, I should be at the end of my three minutes here, right? Was that it? Okay, all right. So, again, I'll come back anytime. You've got my card, you've got my information, so.
Thank you very much, sir.
One last thing. I know I'm going to be on time, but Martin, yourself, Dave, and Roger were at the Chamber of Commerce meeting this last week in Greater Brighton. And for those of you who would like to hear what they have to say, it was excellent. It was great to have one-on-one with you guys and get a chance to drill down to issues that are unique to your particular territory, because I believe you guys are liaison through particular chambers now, right? So, for all the rest of you, if you have a chance, if you're from a different part of the county and you want to hear what they have to say, it was a great opportunity to do that, so, thanks.
You were over three minutes, but once you got started, there's no way I wanted to stop. So, thank you very much.
Minutes, it's later on. I use, and I have a call here in a few minutes. I have a lot for storms, so I can't stick around, but I appreciate it.
Thanks again. Okay.
Mr. Chuck Wright, Handy Township.
Good evening. Tonight, you're going to be looking at a resolution authorizing units access for all the commissioners. And to be quite honest, I'm kind of surprised that this already isn't the standard operating procedure that the gentlemen up here are looking at the details of the finances and keeping a close eye on it and getting daylight on it. You know, you guys are operating under daylight in the Open Meetings Act. I think that same daylight should extend further so that there are no questions about improprietaries, and I'm not suggesting there is any. But I think a second set of eyes is always good on anything. So, I'd like you to approve the resolution this evening. Thank you.
Jennifer Marks, Brighton Township.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Marks. This is more a general informational, not specific to your agenda. So, as you may be aware, in 2021, the most recent year for complete data, fentanyl poisoning was linked to more than 2/3 of the 107,000 drug-related deaths. Per the CDC, fentanyl poisoning was the top cause of death in the U.S. for those aged 18 to 45. And the age group seeing the largest increase related to this type of death currently is 12- to 17-year-old children. In my opinion, this is an American concern, and education is essential if we hope to reverse these trends. Recognizing you're all very invested in the community, and specifically the health of the residents in this area, I wanted to share an event that will hopefully raise awareness and begin discussion in our community. My family has arranged for Amy Neville of the Alexander Neville Foundation to present a town hall educational session to anyone that's interested in attending. Ms. Neville lost her 14-year-old son to accidental fentanyl poisoning a few years ago. He purchased a single pill on Snapchat, not knowing it was laced with fentanyl, and it killed him. In the wake of this tragedy, her family has established this foundation, and they've dedicated themselves to traveling around the country. They've done PSAs in school districts. She has a wealth of information. They've produced a short film that they show, and she's very adept at starting these conversations in communities. The town hall will be at 242 on Monday, March 6th. It starts at 6:00 P.M. I have some flyers I'm going to leave here for you. My name is on here as well as my email, so if you want to reach out to me if you have questions, or if you want an electronic version of it, I'm more than happy to provide it, and I'll just leave those over here. That's it. Thank you.
Any other material that you want to leave with us? Give it to the clerk, please.
Thank you very much. Margaret and Patrick McDonald, Genoa Township.
Good evening, gentlemen, gentlemen, no ladies. I see some familiar faces here and very welcoming faces. My name is Peggy McDonald, and I'm here with my husband, Patrick. We're deeply concerned, as I know all of you are, that there's no homeless shelter in Livingston County. And you are the people who run our county, so I'm coming to you with my concern and possibly some ideas. I have no credentials. I'm not backed by anybody, or I'm just, I like to live in a place where we take care of our poor, and I know you do, too, so that's all good. We have a history in Livingston County. I mean, we have had the Salvation Army here. They are no longer. We've had severe weather group, you know, that took care, Chilson Baptist Church housed them most recently. That fell apart. So, I think there needs to be some doing. And how and where I don't know, because I'm not in the political arena nor hold any purse strings. I did go up and see Senator Lana Tice, Ann Bolin, Bazote, and Mark Tisdale. I did not see them all in person because they were at a meeting that day, but I saw some of their secretaries and got some good information, particularly from Representative Tice's office. And they talked about a group called Visiting, not visiting angels, homeless angels, which is in Lansing, which could be a good model for all of us. We have over 50 churches in Livingston County. We have a good wealth, wealthy population. And I am hoping somehow that we can correlate our resources. My aim in coming here is to rattle your chains, that's to ask you if you've used up the COVID money. Would that be available if there were enough people interested in starting a homeless shelter? I know my time is coming at an end. Do you have anything you want to add, Pat?
Well, I'm here to support my wife of 60 years, if I know what's good for me. I'm on the Brighton District Library Commission, which has nothing to do with this. I'm just appearing on my own. I'm also a member of the St. Vincent de Paul Society, and we weekly have men, women, couples coming in who are without shelter and need assistance. We can help them maybe a week at a time, maybe two weeks maximum, but that's hardly, and this is at basically hotels or shelters of that type where you're paying a certain amount per evening, okay? So, I'm very supportive of this idea and Peggy's endeavors to do so, and I thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening.
Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Okay.
Good to see you again.
Thank you. And if you have any ideas, please contact us. We have our information.
Did you want to leave? Yeah, if you have some information to leave with the clerk?
All I have is your name. If you would like to provide your contact information on here as well, I will be happy to share that with the commissioners. Mr. Chair, I have no further cards from in the boardroom here, so.
Is there anybody on Zoom?
I do, Commissioner. I have Randy Clausen.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Well, I'm glad to be able to address you, and thank you for going through all that snow and ice to get here to run this county for us, but because of my bad vision at night with, especially with wet roads, I have to do this virtually. But I want you to know that a group of us from our, our United Methodist Committee that's been doing transportation went to a transportation bonanza and, and got so many good ideas. And you can imagine how happy I was when I saw that, the title that M.D. put on this, this learning opportunity was reframing infrastructure from projects to people. And we've been talking about how important transportation is to people. And so, this is just, it was just another confirmation that, yeah, we're heading in the right direction as you evaluate the improvement of public transportation through the lets, through lets for adequate and weekend transportation. So, I just wanted to share that with you because we did get a lot of good ideas. And as you continue to make wise choices, then please be sure that those choices that you make are for the good of the people, remembering that particularly the people in the 24% of households that cannot make ends meet. Appreciate your ongoing concern for the disadvantaged in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else on Zoom?
I do not see any other hands raised on Zoom.
There is no one else. We'll close call to the public and move to item nine, which is the approval of the minutes of this evening's, I'm sorry, approval of the minutes of February 13th.
I move to approve the minutes of February 13th, 2023, and the closed session minutes of February 13th, 2023. Fiani.
Been supported. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have no tabled items from the previous meetings, item 10. Next, we'll move on to reports. We have a report from the Livingston County Visitors and Conventions Bureau. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. Good evening. I don't know if I need this. Maybe not. Does it work?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
It's working? Okay.
Good to see you, Joe. Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and start. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mary Robinson, and I'm the Director of the Livingston County Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is also rebranded as Explore Brighton Howell Area. We promote all of the communities, all of the area of Livingston County. Thank you for allowing me time on your very busy agenda this evening, and I can see there are a lot of people behind me, so I will keep it as brief as possible. Because I could talk absolutely for hours about the Visitors Bureau and all the exciting things happening in Livingston County as it relates to tourism. But I will limit myself to some highlights. More details will be shared at our annual partner meeting held on Thursday, this Thursday, at 11:30, Black Brewery in Howell. A few of you have already RSVP'd, but if you would like to attend and have not RSVP'd, please let me know. It's at 11:30 this Thursday. I'd like to say thank you for all you do for this community as leaders. You're called to make very difficult decisions, and it's sometimes very challenging, and just want to let you know that we really appreciate all that you do. And congratulations to Nathan and all of you for your top workplace award for 2022 from the Detroit Free Press. That's pretty impressive. Wanted to make sure I recognized that. Looks like I'm able to share my screen. Oh, okay. Just a quick reminder of our mission. We're here to promote and develop the Livingston County visitor experience. Inspire and encourage those to choose Livingston County as a destination for the next trip, meeting, or event. And we also remind our visitors to explore their own backyard and keep those dollars flowing local, because visitors in our community pay for our salaries, our goods, our services, and taxes. Visitors Bureau's largest project for 2022 was launching our Certified Tourism Ambassador Program. What I handed out to you just a few minutes ago was our annual visitor's guide. We print 10,000 copies of that that goes to 15 Michigan Welcome Centers across the state, as long as all, as well as all of the chambers, many local area businesses, many local area attractions. We put that everywhere. So, we're promoting Livingston County outside the area, so you will see that publication and our efforts in the community, but typically, we're outward-facing, pushing this outside to bring meetings, events, and visitors here. So, going back to our So going back to our Certified Tourism Ambassador Program, which we launched in the end of twenty twenty-two. And this is our website. Certified Tourism Ambassador Program, this is a customized program. It's an industry-recognized certification accredited through the Tourism Ambassador Institute. And it aligns our people and our infrastructures and our leaders and our businesses and tourism frontline people all together to give excellent customer service and knowledge about our area. More than fifty-six thousand individuals in the U.S. and Bermuda have been certified since this program's inception, and we're one of the newest programs in the nation. Can learn more on our website, the Brighton, Explore Brighton Howell Area Tourism Ambassador Program. We're increasing frontline employee volunteers to turn every single visitor experience into a positive experience so that people return and they tell everyone else to visit here. We want you to become CTAs. We want everyone in this community to become Certified Tourism Ambassadors. And we want everyone to become a Certified Tourism Ambassador in our community. It's a very comprehensive program. I want you to learn more about it, so please let me know if I can give you information. All of this is on our website. It's a credentialed program. It increases visitor guest scores. It increases visit repeat trips, and it's just an amazing program. We're still in the business of traditional marketing. Like I said, this is our visitor's guide, and we also do ads in different publications across the state and country. We do visitor itineraries. We do all kinds of different print pieces and digital marketing, of course, is our, our biggest push. We have Facebook and Instagram, LinkedIn, Pinterest. All of these pages are telling people, come and see what is amazing about Livingston County. We market throughout the area in our feeder markets, including Indiana, Wisconsin, Ohio. Those are the biggest draws to Livingston County and Michigan. We leverage the Pure Michigan website and the Pure Michigan power of marketing. We promote the Livingston County assets like the Legacy Center Sports Complex, Mount Brighton's Vale Resort, the Howell Nature Center, Pinkney Recreation Center for area, Brighton Recreation Area, Island Lake and all of the parks. Our destination dining scene is bringing people from all over to our area. And statewide, the number of visits grew by eleven million, which is an increase ten percent over year. And in Livingston County, our visitor spending has increased. Luckily, we had, of course, a down year in twenty twenty, but it's rebounded. We are actually at a little bit higher level than twenty nineteen for visitor spending. And our visitor spending was at two hundred and eighty-three point two million this year, which is twenty-five point eight percent of our market share for the area. And I'm just going to share this really quick video with you. Is there audio? Maybe? And if there is no audio, then you will just all have to come to our annual partner meeting on Thursday. So I will play it there with audio. No? Okay. Okay. Unmute. Give it a try. I can, I can hear the music. Yes, if you want to narrate, you can see that we have twenty-nine point nine million in lodging, two hundred and eighty-three point two million in visitor spending. Actually, it's twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. State and local tax revenue, thirty-six point six million.
Try to click your unmute button here.
Well, here's a period.
Oh, boy.
That's okay. That's okay.
Well, you're fighting with the machine there. Mary, the revenues we're seeing like for lodging, is that the total of the revenues for the hotels in the area? Is that what that is?
Yes. And you have a new hotel? Exactly. Yeah, we have a new hotel, the Hampton. It's flat, sitting Grand River area. You've probably seen it, just launched and opened this year. But yeah, we, we have over a dozen hotels in the area, and of all the attractions and all visitor spending contribute to those dollars. Those are also their overnight stays. They stay longer, they spend more money. But day visitors are great. And what we do is we work to try to convert those day visitors to overnight visitors so that they come back, they spend more money in our community. And you never know, it starts with a visit, is what I like to say. If that person comes to visit, they may want to raise their family here. They may want to open their business here, go to school at Cleary or choose to launch a new endeavor here. So it always starts with a visit. Once they come, they're usually hooked. So I would love to have you again attend our annual partner meeting. If you're unable to, I can send you an email with a summary of the, the video and our statistics for twenty twenty-two. If you have any questions?
Yes.
Sure.
A little bit earlier in your presentation, you, you mentioned the Pure Michigan Program. It seemed to me that that was discontinued a few years ago. Has it come back to life?
It has. It has been funded, and that's a really great question. It was during the COVID years, it was not funded, but it's been refunded. At its current rate, it's about thirty-five million. And that is used to promote the whole entire state, all of the assets and leverage programming with our visitors bureaus. We have some special programming that we can leverage with Pure Michigan to, that, that others aren't able to, to further our message as well. But yes, it has rebounded.
I was curious because I, my wife and I like to watch Under the Radar Michigan. Sponsored, I believe, by, by the Pure Michigan Program. And I, I, I really think their commercials, if you will, are brilliant.
Yes, and stay tuned for twenty twenty-four. We're going to have Under the Radar Michigan come to Brighton. They've been to Howell, they've been to Hill, but they have not yet been to Brighton. So we're working on that.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to point out that, you know, we have to be a little careful asking people from Ohio to. We have some high-ranking officials here that just never left, so.
I have to confess that I was from Ohio as well and, but proud Michigander. Yes, we are taking their dollars from Ohio.
Any other questions for Ms. Robinson? Thank you very much, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you.
Good to have you here.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate that.
She disconnected there. No, no, you're all right. You're fine.
Oh, I'm okay. Okay. Sorry.
We'll go on with reports. And it's already mentioned earlier this evening that on Friday, Commissioners Roger Deaton and Marty Smith and I went to, were invited to the Brighton Chamber of Commerce for their meeting and spent well over an hour, maybe close to an hour and a half. Once we got into Q and A, it was an outstanding meeting. And I would like to call on Roger to give us a few words about his reaction and, and how it went with you. Roger was each, Roger was right on top of it. All of a sudden, he plugged his computer into their huge screen, and he was putting on quite a presentation. And, and the same with Martin. So I'd like to ask each of them to give us a few words on how they felt that went and, and what a good, what a good thing came of that now. It allows us to network more closely with the chambers. We plan to do this in the Howell Chamber here shortly. And we don't, I don't recall ever there being this sort of a relationship between county government and the chambers before, but it's a great start. Commissioner Deaton.
Commissioner, I, it was your, your idea to have one of the commissioners reach out and be like a liaison with each chamber. And I was selected for Brighton, and they had about, I think about thirty people there for a meet and greet with the commissioners. Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Domas and I, and it kind of worked really good concert. I think we all touched on different subjects and answered, were able to answer different questions. We were able to talk about ARPA money. I think Mr. Smith will talk a little bit more about that. We were able to talk about broadband, a lot of questions on that. It was kind of interesting to see that Congresswoman Slacken had her staff there as well. There's a lot of the businesses in, in the area and DTE. I think you saw that they, they commented as well. It was really good to interact afterwards and getting a lot of personal questions on different things that are happening in the county. So for being on board for just a couple of months, it was, it was, it was a lot of fun. It was great to interact. And Pam did a great job of pulling in a lot of, a lot of people from the community. She's running the Brighton Chamber, so I'll leave it at that. Afterwards, I can talk about the meeting after Mr. Martin as well.
Yeah, I, I enjoyed the meeting. It was, it was nice. We, we, we got into some nitty-gritty. Many of you come to a lot of meetings here, so you understand how, how we work. But it's a, there's a big gap between those that are ten regular meetings here and those that are maybe chamber members that never come to a meeting. So they didn't really understand how things flow in the process. So I thought that was probably the most beneficial part for the listeners. Thank goodness Roger had his computer with him and slapped up the grid of the proposed our band, broadband ring. And that, that part went very well, too. I think it's going to be highly beneficial, especially on the economic development side. There's, there's been kind of this Chinese wall between the Board of Commissioners and the chambers and anything economic development we support sparked to a very modest extent. But I think this will really help jumpstart the economic development side of things that we might be able to assist with, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else have any questions or remarks? Yes, sir.
Immediately after the, the Brighton Chamber Director Toby and I ran down to the SEMCOG meeting down in Detroit, and that was the first time I ever had a chance to, to attend that. And that's the Southeast Michigan Council on Government. So it's seven counties that get together, and they, they work with grants on our whole area for anything from transportation to parks. And they were very happy that Commissioner Smith and I and Director Toby was there. Had a good presence. They pulled us aside afterwards, and we're very interested in our broadband. So what we're doing here in Livingston County, I think is great. I think most everybody else would agree as well. But to see seven counties interested in what we're doing here was pretty impressive. So Director Toby made us look real good. I'm not going to say I did, but he made us look real good. And he was able to show our plans and how we're, we're using ARPA funds to, you know, kickstart it. And SEMCOG also gave us a small grant at the beginning of this project to do studies and stuff. So they were really interested to see how we use the money and, you know, how frugal we are. So it was a real good meeting and a lot of, lot of, lot of good, good people down there. So I think Farmington was looking at the way we were doing things as well, so.
Thank you so much for taking the time out of your day, both of you, for, for spending the day with the chambers and with SEMCOG. Are there any other reports from any of the commissioners? If not, I'll turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Jay Drick. We've going to take a little different approach to the agenda for the board meetings now. I will do, the chair will do the first half of the agenda. And the second half of the agenda, beginning with the resolutions, will be conducted by our vice chair, Commissioner Jay Drick. Commissioner?
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number twelve on the agenda, if you're following, is Resolutions for Consideration. Resolution twelve A numbered two zero two three dash oh two dash zero two two. A resolution appointing the Planning Department Director brought to us by our administrator, Nathan Byrd. You, first, I would need a resolution to begin discussion.
So I moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Domas, supported by Commissioner Helsnerman. You may proceed with your presentation.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Before I get started on this, I just want to let you know that I'm fully supportive of Ohio tax dollars coming up for Livingston County, far less supportive of what's been happening on the football field the last two years. But we'll see how that develops. But I'm going to give just a quick summary. I think most of you were in the room last week. Really, really happy to have Scott with me tonight and for the opportunity to him to be, for him to be considered for this position. You all know that Kathleen retired in January. She served the county for over three decades. And Scott's been with the county for a long time as well. He's been a principal planner here since two thousand and six. Prior to that, he spent four years as a planner in one of our townships, in Heartland Township. So he has a lot of great knowledge inside Livingston County. He's a resident. He's a great communicator, which we learned firsthand as we went through the interview process. And he's very well-suited to lead this department. I mentioned last week that planning is a, a small department, but it's an important department. Lots of relationships around the county, lots of things developing right now that involves our planning department. And I feel really comfortable that Scott's the right person to lead that department moving forward. Scott does have a degree in urban and regional planning from Eastern Michigan University. He's also certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. And if you approve this resolution tonight, he'll be official eight AM tomorrow would be his first day as director. So hope that's the case. I know Scott answered some questions for you last week. And Scott, if you want to add anything, and certainly Commissioners, if you'd like to ask any questions or about the process or, or of Scott, feel free.
Well, again, excuse me, again, this evening, Commissioners, I just want to thank you for this consideration, for this position. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening of me, of the department or any of our processes. So have at it.
Commissioners? Commissioner Matt Eer, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Barber, I appreciate your, we had an exchange of emails regarding local ordinances, and I appreciate your prompt response. I, it got me thinking, and I don't want an extended answer tonight, but I thought we'd chat later. You know, the, I, I could see real value for the County Planning Commission if, if we were like a clearinghouse of ordinances so that we understood the, you know, if we had on file the ordinances of the various townships and the cities and the villages. Is that something, that's something I'd like to chat with you because, you know, you've got the, a lot of concern, you know, in most, most recently in Marion Township. And, you know, some, I think you had presented in the, in the prior meeting that I think it was Handy Township had a strong ordinance to maintain, you know, local control. And, and I passed that information along to, you know, townships that I represented. And I just think that there's room, there's an opportunity for us to really be an aid for, for townships if we were to kind of have a catalog of that information, so.
We, we do actually have those ordinances all in our office. We have a copy of each of the township's ordinance as well as their master plans. And when the township decides to amend their ordinance or update their master plan, we collaborate with them heavily during that process. We find something in the review process that serves as a model ordinance. We're always, you know, we always pass that along to the other communities as well, saying this might be a good example for you to follow.
Thank you. And I appreciate that that's already, you know, in place. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sir.
Any other Commissioner question? Commissioner?
Just a comment. I had the pleasure to sit with Scott and Rob many times over the last probably six weeks and, and discuss different topics from solar to ordinances. And it was, it was enlightening. I thought I knew a lot, but these guys are just cracking. They're just, they're just amazing what they do in there and how they can pull out a, a master plan from one of the townships and cross-reference it so quickly and then get the information back to the townships. I also wanted to make a comment that, you know, there's just two of them in there. And it was really nice to hear that, you know, your, your cohort there was sticking up for you and supports you as well. So I'm obviously, I'm going to be in support of this for sure.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner? Questions, comments, discussion? Commissioner Gross?
Kind of off the wall, but I, I see Scott at football games, and I'm hoping to snooze.
Kind of off the wall, but I, I see Scott at football games and I'm hoping this new responsibility won't keep you away from the games.
Oh, no, not at all.
Good.
Priorities.
Very good. Seeing no other hands up or indicators, we'll close the discussion. I'd like a voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye. I hear no opposed. Nine, zero unanimous.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your vote of confidence and support this evening.
Moving on to resolution twelve B, two oh two three dash oh two dash oh two three, reading resolution approving the appointment of Caitlin Harder as backup magistrate for the fifty-third district court. It comes to us from district court. May I have a motion to
discuss? So move Gross.
Support Nakagiri.
Thank you. Moved by Gross, seconded by Nakagiri. Commissioner?
Commissioner, Chairman, can we make that a motion to approve?
Commissioner, we cannot hear you.
You make that a motion to approve as opposed to a motion to discuss. That way we can just jump right into the vote and follow in the discussion.
I'm not unsure why, why, why you think that's.
The, the, the motion on the table was motion to discuss and we could just go to a, a motion to adopt the resolution and then have our discussion and then flow right into the vote. So it's.
I think it's six, one, half a dozen on the other. All those in favor of the motion? To, to discuss.
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Marissa Lutz? Come on up, present if you will.
So this resolution is to approve for Caitlin Harder, who is currently our full-time district court law clerk for Judge Murphy's Chambers, to move forward with the other component of her job description, which is the attorney magistrate component. So she is, meets all the requirements of the statute, which is the MCL six hundred point eight five zero seven. And we actually are already in receipt of her performance bond. And she is set to go. All of her experience, her past experience speaks volumes. She's been a practicing attorney since two thousand and fifteen. She worked for the Attorney General's Office. And she also has been in private practice since May of eighteen. So she does have her P number, which is eight, zero, three, three, six. So I think she's, I think she's more than ready to go. She's ready for the attorney magistrate component of the position and she's already got the law clerk position already, already down. She's been in with us since the end of January. So she's doing very, very well.
Thank you. Questions, comments, discussion? Commissioner Gross?
Ms. Lutz, when you appeared before the FAM committee last week, my recollection was that this harder. While she's all qualified, there are certain steps that she has to go through before she's, I guess, what you would say, fully functional.
Certified.
To be certified. So how long does that take?
The, there's two phases. So the first phase, she can most likely complete within thirty days. There's a lot of self-test quizzes that she will sell tests that she has to go through. So she'll get a manual that she'll have to go through and she'll have to take the tests and submit them to, to scale the state court administrative office. She'll have to do a ride along with an officer. She'll have to shadow a magistrate for the day in another jurisdiction. So that is the first phase. So if she gets through the self-tests and all the other two components of phase one pretty quickly, which she's, she's ready to go, like I said, to start the position. So once she gets through those, those three components, which I'm pretty sure she can do in thirty days, she can start doing the on-call work. And then the second phase, which is actually magistrate school, which is up in Lansing. And that I believe takes, I think that's a couple of months. Then she'll have her full certification, but she'll be approved by the state after phase one to start her on-call duties.
Okay, so she's ready to go into the, these first phases and looks like be approximately sixty days before, I guess she would be out on her own, so to speak. What would happen if, God forbid, something should jump out and she doesn't meet one of those benchmarks? For example, the, the, the scale exam or test that you mentioned.
Commissioner Gross, can you please speak up a little bit?
So if somehow she didn't pass that, that test that scale requires, what, what would happen?
I, I don't think that, that you're set up for failure on, on not passing those quizzes. You know, she has folks up at scale that will work with her closely to make sure that they, you know, they cover any of the curriculum that she didn't understand. From what I understand, they're, you know, they, they come with a manual, they come with kind of a self-test, you know, go back and look at the questions and the answers kind of thing and take the test. So as, again, the state, they don't set them up for failure. So I, I'm pretty confident. Like I said, she's, she's been around the block as far as being an attorney and I think she'll, she'll do very well with the quizzes. I don't, I don't see her not passing them.
So theoretically, there's little to no chance that we would lose her somehow?
No, no.
Thank you.
No doubt. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a bit of a comment. Politely suggests that she do a ride along on a Friday or Saturday night because the biggest part of her job is going to be getting woken up from a deep sleep at two AM and she's going to have to understand what the police officer just went through with the preliminary tests, the ride to the hospital, the blood draw.
Commissioner Drake, can you speak up a little bit, please?
So that she sees all that because just riding around and watching a police officer do traffic tickets does nothing.
Correct.
For the magistrate. Okay?
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Closing discussion then. All those, I'm calling for a voice vote on resolution twelve B.
Mr. Chair, we don't have a motion on the floor because you had asked for a motion to discuss. That was moved by Commissioner Gross, seconded by Commissioner Nakagiri, and it passed nine to zero. So we will need a motion to adopt the resolution, kind of similar to what Commissioner Fiani, if you.
May I get a motion to adopt? In a second?
And that was Commissioner Domas and Dayton. Okay.
All those in favor, voice vote, kindly say yes or aye.
Aye.
Unanimous nine to zero. Moving on to twelve C. It is written as two zero two three dash oh two dash oh two four. This will eventually require a roll call vote. Can I get a motion?
Second sample.
Thank you. Cindy, on Zoom, can you proceed?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
So I went over this at the FAM committee meeting. This is our first budget amendment that we would have each year and it is really just comprised of a couple of items that are carryover from the prior year. The projects were either started or the items ordered in the previous year, but not yet received. So we are just requesting that these, the dollar amounts or the balance of the project get moved into the current year and into the new budget. There's two items on the list. They're both for facility services. One is for carpet and the other is for the replacement of wall-mounted fans and coil units, both at the old courthouse. And the total amount is seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars. Are there any questions?
Seeing no questions or discussion. This is a roll call, excuse me.
I have a, just a discussion point. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to share with my colleagues that discussion I had with administration over the last week. The, we do, and rightfully so, focus our primary attention on the general fund, but there are special revenue funds and enterprise funds that if you add up all the, the monies from those funds, it's almost as big as the general fund. And I think from a oversight and that, that we ought to somehow find a way to integrate into our, you know, either FAM or full board discussions, a little report on how the enterprise and the special revenue funds are doing. I would remind my colleagues of a few years back, a special revenue fund, the EMS fund, you know, we ultimately had to infuse it with four hundred thousand dollars of general fund money because they didn't have enough money at the end of the year to pay its bills. So anyway, it's just, I, I bring this up for the consideration of my colleagues to perhaps get reports on the special revenue funds and the enterprise funds. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Commissioner Fiani, can you make a note of that? So it gets on the gentleman's. Thank you. Seeing no other comment or question, all the, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Helsnerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drake?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dayton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Item number twelve D. It's numbered two zero two three dash oh two dash zero two five. It's entitled a resolution providing commissioners with full access to Livingston County financial records. It's brought to us by the Board of Commissioners. It was discussed at FAM at length with all nine of us here. Is there any further discussion or any questions someone might wish to propose and we'll find a presenter to answer?
For formality, I'll move the resolution.
Thank you.
Support, Helsnerman.
Proceeding then to any question. Commissioner Smith, go ahead.
Yeah, I believe all the commissioners are in receipt of.
Commissioner, we cannot hear you.
Are in receipt of an email slash letter from the, wow. From the chief judges, Miriam Kavanaugh and Michael Hattie, expressing their concerns over the broad language in the resolution, which does not delineate the, the courts as someone that should be excluded from this resolution. I, I think this merits a little more depth in conversation. Quite frankly, I, I, I really think this needs to be postponed until we can look at some more details of this, you know, how to, how to craft it so that the, the courts and the confidential information they have are, are protected. Maybe the, the depth of which munis is explored. I think the idea, I, I've said it before, the idea that the, the Board of Commissioners is going to have unlimited access, full read capabilities, whatever that means. You know, quite frankly, we're, we're venturing far beyond what our job description is and into what the employees of the counties, our job is policy and oversight. So I, I would recommend that we postpone this and make a motion to do so.
Thank you. I hear the motion. Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second? I'll second, seconded by Gross and proposed by Commissioner Smith to postpone. Discussion on the topic of postponement. Commissioner Helsnerman?
This is a, quite a complicated subject. I would, I would have a different approach to this. I have an amendment that I will be making that would have a different approach to what you're asking for, because I do believe that it is a complex issue. And, but I think that we can deal with it without postponing and not in favor of postponing at this time.
Any other comment or question on the topic of postponement? Commissioner Nakagiri?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I would not be in favor of postponing. I think the, it's clear to me that, you know, we, we do have the authority as a legislative branch of government in Livingston County, that this is, as a member of the executive branch of Livingston County said, there is no question that the county financial transactions within the ERP system and all that is associated to them are fully owned by the body of the Board of Commissioners. And so as a body, it is our information. And for us to be considering, you know, whether we're going to fully avail ourselves of the information contained in there, for me, I think it's clear, you know, if, we are fiduciaries for the taxpayers and we are responsible for their wise expenditure of the money and we can make better decisions, in my view, that if we have access to all the information that's in munis and I, I think they, the resolution was postponed once to allow information to be collected with regards to policy. How are we going to handle the confidentiality? If we run into confidential information, you know, social security numbers, health-related information, there are policies in place in the county that the resolution says we are going to follow further, that we would follow any statutory requirements. So basically, the Board of Commissioners is going to follow any policies and statutes that are already being followed by county employees, which I'm a, a big fan of following the law and I'm a big fan of not treating the commissioners differently than other employees. We are not above the law. We are not below the law. But suffice it to say, I, I think, I, I, I will be voting against postponement and encourage others to, to do likewise. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I think next would be Commissioner Gross. You had your hand up.
Yes, thank you. I was on record at the FAM meeting last week as being opposed to this resolution for a number of reasons. And while I agree with Commissioner Nakagiri, the author of this resolution, that statutorily commissioners have a right to access information. The problem I have with that is this resolution opens it up not just to all the members of this board to, but to all members of any future board. And while most commissioners, I suspect, would not be interested in, in getting into the weeds, if you will, of the general ledger. My position is that we have a financial staff and we have elected officials and department heads and other folks scattered throughout all of those entities that, that do financial work. And I, for one, trust them to do the job that they're being paid to do. And I, I think there's been times when issues have arisen that have been brought to us before our attention. I, I'm concerned about what our managers and employees will react to this if they feel that one or more commissioners are looking over their shoulder all the time. And that's what this resolution would permit. I would be in favor of this resolution if there were some restrictions. I know the author of the resolution has a goal of attaining information related to a certain department and activity within the county. But there are other options available to get that information. And the opportunity was not availed, was not taken advantage of. So I recognize that we have a legal right. I just don't feel it's appropriate. And I'd be willing to vote in favor of postponement if we can have further discussion and possibly look at the opportunity to put some restrictions into the request.
Thank you. Certainly. Any further comment or discussion about postponement? Commissioner Gross. Yeah. Or Domas. Whichever you want to go by tonight.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You know, it's like, is there an elephant in the room someplace that we're not talking about? And it seems to me that that there is and that we should open the discussion wide enough so that we all understand much of what's going on here and what prompts this action. And this, believe me, this is not personal. I hope you understand that. But I've been here for I've only been only here for a couple of months. But in hindsight, I've been here for an awful long time. I've seen them stuff come and I've seen it go. This is the kind of thing that it has to go, but very carefully. We have some people in the audience that have strong feelings about this and have reservations about this. I don't see that the reservations have been adjudicated. And I would ask our treasurer. Jenny, would you please get up and give us your feelings on this? I know you've sent us a memo. And, Mr. Chair, I don't mean to be presumptuous here, but it may be it may be a good time to get everything out. And Madam Treasurer, you have some feelings about this. I think you want to share with the board.
Upon request of a commissioner, the chair always has the right to ask a person in the audience to come up and talk, so.
Yes, I didn't. I didn't mean to impose on you.
No, you didn't.
Chairman, thank you.
So with regard, I think the question at hand is postponement. I think that's the discussion on the floor. So I will just speak logistically first. The logistically, I would like to see something explicitly state that the courts are excluded. And logistically, to implement this, should it pass by March first, is not obtainable. Permissions in the system are complex. They are tiered. They are across twelve to fifteen different modules that we're talking about. And across, I think we have six to eight different module leads. Each one of those module leads will have to touch every module and reconfigure permissions for commissioners. That will take, I would say, a minimum to have thirty days would be, I think, fair. So I'm going to leave it at that just for a moment because I know the question on the floor is about postponing. I have philosophical perspective that I would like to share, but I don't know that that's this discussion at hand.
Go ahead. You might as well.
Okay. I had sent you each a letter some time ago. So let me say first, too, I I know and I appreciate the responsibility you all feel to your constituents and the accountability and transparency and know that I feel that same level of accountability coming from my role. And my role, when it comes to the financials, is to ensure the financials are accurate and timely and that the system is of integrity. And so I bring my concern to you from that perspective as keeper of the record. The ER, like I said, the ERP system is, it is broad. It touches twelve or fifteen different modules that I've listed in the letter. Each one of those modules, with the exception of the project ledger and HR. Each one of those with those two exceptions create financial transactions in the system. So the resolution says all financial transactions. So we are talking about all of those. We are talking about journal entries, general bills, which are invoices we create for billing outside organizations, capital assets, work orders, inventory, contracts requisitions. We're talking about each one of those creates financial transactions in the system. Okay? We, yes, Board of Commissioners shall view the financial transactions at any time. The question is, does viewing them mean you must have database access to view that? Now, we have always balanced, so let me go back. I sent you a couple articles and one in particular said there are some risks you shouldn't, you just shouldn't take, especially when it comes to data security. As the home to all your most vital business information, an ERP software of all things should be a risk-free zone. One of the best ways to mitigate risk in an ERP is through access control, where security enables the right individuals to access the right resources at the right times for the right reasons. When we went to an ERP system ten years ago, this county recognized that this was a big undertaking and it has severe consequences if it's compromised. This is the basis on which we make all of our financial decisions in this county. We created a governance committee to oversee the functioning of the ERP system. That governance committee is comprised of the finance officer, the treasurer, the HR director, the chief information officer, and the ERP administrator. That committee created a governance plan document. And within that plan, we itemize the role and responsibility of each player in governing this software. We have a module lead assigned to every module that those module leads span various departments throughout the county, fiscal services, purchasing, myself, HR, IT. Those roles and responsibilities for a module lead include building and maintaining their modules. We built this software from the ground up. Those module leads are responsible for creating, managing, and assigning user roles within their modules, including the functional roles that are needed, the workflow rules, and the TCM permissions. TCM, as a reminder, is the paper attachment product. Those module leads are responsible for understanding how the system has been implemented to support the business, to assist in training end users, daily resolutions and responses to troubleshooting. And they're responsible for assisting in identifying process changes or configuration changes that could improve the system for business practices. I say all this to say, this is a complex, thought-out structure. And across the philosophy, it is an industry standard that access to a financial software is given based on the day-to-day need. Day-to-day, normal workload need. And that's what our module leads are providing, access for the day-to-day workload. I and just to clarify, the commissioners, right now, each one of you have your own individual log on to the system. You can see every single account in the general ledger. You can see every single transaction in the general ledger. You can run reports. You can do queries. Within the accounts payable module, you can even, you have literally full access in the accounts payable module. The philosophy is, in your day-to-day work, you are overseeing the disbursements and the expenditure of the county's taxpayer dollars. And in that regard, you have full access. There is no further access that can be given in accounts payable. You have it all. The resolution seeks to give you that same level of access across all other transactions in the system, which, as we've talked about, can and oftentimes do contain sensitive data. Again, we've given permissions based on what is expected as a day-to-day need. That's not to say that a commissioner, if they wanted or needed information, would not be provided that information. And in my twenty-eight years here in this county, we have been able to satisfy every commissioner's request. Okay, I'll stop there at that. Okay. The philosophy of less is best kind of approach to access is not unique to Livingston County. I did a email survey to all other county treasurers of what level of access their commissioners have to their financial software. I received forty-three responses from forty-three different counties. In all forty-three, their commissioners have no access to the general ledger, software, to the software themselves. One of the responses I received from a fellow county says, with regards to transparency, we can provide them any reports or they have access to our paper files upon request, but we don't allow anyone else having access to a program that they do not use daily. Too many things can happen unintentionally with the click of a mouse. So I know Treasurer Nash, sitting before you, is not an ERP security specialist. But when forty-three other counties say their commissioners have no login access to their general ledger, that's an industry standard. I know Livingston doesn't necessarily do what others do, but I use that to show that's the standard across this topic. Hold on, please. So I guess I guess I will just close and say the it's not a question of is this material an entitlement to the Board of Commissioners. It is. The question is, do we give access in a financial software based on what some may need down the road at some point? This level of access is very, very unheard of. This is not something I would expect any of you as commissioners to use on a daily basis. So we've always balanced the risk of full access to the financial software. And that risk of doing so, we have been able to mitigate with the access we have in place and been able to provide to commissioners whatever they needed in a different fashion. Yes, you're entitled to it. But that doesn't mean, in my opinion, that it has to be through a login into the software.
You asked the young lady to talk.
Young lady, thank you.
Well, I heard the twenty-eight. And thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate your patience and your wisdom. However, this board decides on this, I will, I will I will go, I will, I wouldn't say err on the side of caution, but I will uphold the decision of this board, no matter what it says. I think the wisdom of nine people is better, in this case, ten people maybe, but better than the wisdom or opinion of one person. So whatever this board decides, I will support.
Commissioner Smith.
Just a couple of follow-up questions.
Certainly.
I've read the last couple of years audits of the county done by Plant Moran. And they've issued clean opinions. Do we also do a SOX audit? Operational?
Well, there is a control. There's an internal control audit that takes place along with the financial audit. Yes. So they are auditing all of our internal controls.
Have they, in the last five years, say, have they issued any what they would call critical concerns?
No.
Have they issued many moderate concerns?
No.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, I have other comments, but I would defer to any other commissioner who hasn't had a chance to speak yet.
Thank you.
My question is if we need to vote on postponement because of Q and A of the resolution.
Commissioner, we can't hear you.
My question is if we need to vote on the postponement before we continue to Q and A on the resolution itself.
I'm hearing that as a call for a vote.
I call for a vote on the Oh, well, that's why I'm asking.
If I may, on the issue of the postponement.
Issue.
Yeah, we'll stick to the post, the postponement. The treasurer had two concerns regarding, that I noted in my notes, two concerns regarding the postponement. One, she mentioned the date in the resolution of March third. Doesn't give her enough, does not provide enough time. I would be comfortable amending it and giving the thirty days extra that she requested. I think that's, I don't see any issue with that. The other issue that was brought up under, you know, with regards to the postponement was address, specifically addressing the court's concern, which I would be comfortable adding another whereas, or therefore be it resolved, or that says that this resolution does not apply to the courts. I stated that in my memo that as backup with the rationale that, you know, the resolution called for the county. It didn't say the county and the courts. But for extra clarity, I mean, I don't see any, as the author of the resolution do not have any problem specifically saying that this resolution does not apply to the courts. So that addresses the two issues that were brought up by the treasurer with regards to postponement. So with that being said, I would make a motion to amend the resolution to make it April third rather than March third and to add the language that one more, be it resolved, that this resolution does not apply to the courts.
Your motion to amend is heard by the chair. We'll first decide the postpone and then come back if necessary. It's not off the radar. It's still on the radar. Commissioner Helsman, any comment?
No, I just was pointing out that we're still talking about postponement. It's all point of order.
Any other comment, any other discussion, any other points of postponement? We'll have a roll call. Vote, please, for the postponement. And that will help our clerk to make sure that we're correct and accurate.
Commissioner, Commissioner Smith.
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
No.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman?
Uh, no to postpone.
Commissioner Domus? Commissioner Sample?
No.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
No.
Commissioner Dric?
No.
Commissioner Deaton?
No.
Motion to postpone fails.
Thank you. That record is now made. We'll move to what's been orally moved to amend by Commissioner Nakagiri. I'm hearing that we would change March first to thirty days out, April third first, and we would add another resolved, be it further resolved, that is this resolution is not applicable to court financial records. Madam Clerk, do you have both of those in your notes?
Yes.
So we're set? Is there a second to the motion to amend? Is there a second to the motion to amend?
Second sample.
Second by sample, we have a motion, and now we'll go into discussion on the motion to amend. The thirty day part and the not applicable to courts.
Mr. Chair.
Discussion, go ahead.
I would be favorable to yeah, at least a three month, I was, you know, I was going to do an amendment that took it to September first. In my mind, this is a complicated situation. I think, I think one month puts too much stress upon our county operators that will be doing this. I think that, so I just think we need more time than than one month to do this. If we're gonna do it right, I also in favor sunsetting this in a year so that we reconsider it in a year because we have several of our county electeds have expressed a pause at doing this. So I think that if, if this does become a problem, that we should have a point in the future that we can readdress it if we like, like it. And it hasn't been a problem, then we can re-up it. But at this point, I think, I think thirty days is probably doable. I don't think it wise.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, positions? Commissioner Nakagiri?
I would just comment, you know, regarding the, the date, you know, thirty days, providing another thirty days that that is the timeframe which the treasurer mentioned and and she said it was going to take three months. I don't know if I would have motioned to amend for three months, but you know, we are, I, I, you know, my resolution to amend was based on the recommendation or the statement of the treasurer. Thank you.
Discussion or further comment?
Commissioner Gross? So we have an amendment with support for the changes that Commissioner Nakagiri has identified. But Commissioner Helserman has talked about the further amendment. I'm just wondering, will that come into play after we vote on Commissioner Nakagiri's?
I would suppose so. I, I could amend, I could amend it, amend the amendment, I guess.
No, not quite.
We can.
We'll do it in order.
Okay.
I'll come back to you if you want to.
Okay.
Depending on the outcome.
So, so the next course would be to vote on the amendment sponsored by Commissioner Nakagiri and supported by Mr. G.
Same.
Sample, I'm sorry.
Yes, we, we're drawing close to the time we're gonna vote on whether March first should be changed to April first and an additional resolved paragraph, not applicable, applicable to courts. So with that understanding, no further discussion or comment, excuse me, Commissioner Fiani?
If I may, could we have a reading of what the therefore be it resolved amendment would be, please?
Yes, that's always appropriate. Go ahead.
Therefore be it further resolved that the, this resolution will not apply to the courts. Thank you. Well, he just asked for clarification on the one prong.
Everybody's had time to think now.
We're voting on the amendment. I want to do another roll call, please, for that.
Okay, Commissioner Nakagiri?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Dric?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
No.
Commissioner Helserman?
No.
Commissioner Domus?
No.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Motion to amend carries.
And now I'm the court, or yeah, the court. The chair entertains a comment by Commissioner Helsman.
Okay. I, I would like to make an amendment that, that this sunset in twelve months after it after it is inaugurated for the purpose of reassessing at the end of one year. If we like it, we can go ahead. If not, that will give us a chance to to revisit. It'll make us revisit this idea. Because it is, it has the potential of being controversial. It does not have to be controversial. And I, I, I think as many, as some of the things, and maybe many of the things we do, this will not change what most commissioners are doing. So this may may not have very much of an effect upon the daily activities in the county, so. But that's my, my resolution is to sunset after a year after inauguration. So it may be reconsidered.
Commissioner, may I ask for a clarification? Some would think a sunset means it's done. Some would think revisit would mean another vote. Do you have a preference?
I would, my, my intention is revisit, revisit it in one year, yes.
Revisit.
That we must, that we must vote to approve it to go forward. That's why I use the word sunset. Because if there's a sunset, many times sunset legislation doesn't mean that you stop it. It means that you reconsider at that time. If you like what's going on, then it can be, so I, I would say we need to revisit and re.
Vote.
Yeah, so.
Is it okay if we use revisit and revote?
Yes, right. That's my intention.
Madam Clerk, you good? Understand?
Well, let me just read back to make sure that I'll have it correct to, to get Commissioner Helserman's intent. I have a motion to amend to include the resolution will sunset twelve months after inauguration, so it may be reconsidered. That is what I currently have.
What were the two words you used?
Revisit and revote.
Revisit and revote. Instead of sunset, so.
Revisit and revote. Okay, let me read this back. A motion to amend to include the resolution will be revisited and revoted on twelve months after inauguration so that it may be reconsidered.
Thank you, yes, that's.
Hearing that as the motion to amend, is there a second? Is there a second? Second. Seconded by Commissioner Gross. We move into discussion, questions, answers, any discussion. It's the work of Mr. Commissioner Nakagiri. You can be first if you wish to proceed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would like to get clarification for the record. When we say it is you know, a year after inauguration, say that the resolution was passed tonight, but not implemented for three months, if that were the case. What, what, what date is the date of, it was not fully implemented till three months from now. What is the date of inauguration, tonight or three months from now or sometime in between?
Well, right now, the inauguration date stands at April first. Not a very good day for inaugurating things. But that's, that's what I envisioned that.
Okay.
That if that's what we say, we, we trust our, our staff to be able to do that, so.
Okay, the, so thank you for the clarification. With regards to revisiting and revoting the resolution, the board, whether or not this Commissioner Helserman's res, amendment passes, the board has the capability of revisiting and revoting anything that we do. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. I think that's a correct statement. We could revoke on it tomorrow if we did, if we went through channels. Any other comment or discussion or questions or points that any commissioner wants to raise about this amendment as to a one year revisit, revote? I'm enough to consider Commissioner Gross, go ahead.
So should the amendment, instead of saying one year, would be on or about April first of 2024?
I'm, that's the intent of what, that's the intent of, of my motion, so. So that would be, that would be fine, but I don't, I don't think we need to state that. Say, for, for, for example, if we, if somebody else says, you know, May first or whatever, we change it between now and then, the, the year would still stay, so.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other commissioner wish to speak? Any other commissioner? Any other commissioner?
On this amendment, I also call for a roll call vote kindly. Thank you.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domus?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
No.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
No.
Commissioner Dric?
No.
Commissioner Deaton?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
No.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Motion to amend fails.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm, I'm waiting for a pen to go down.
You're good. I'm all, I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? I'd like to talk about this. First of all, I think that everyone agrees that we already have this authority. You know, I, I think that we have authority for access. It's kind of the question is how do we arrive at it? And tonight I brought several ideas that I thought would be helpful and, and give those with concern hope that we're not going off the deep end. And I don't think we talked about trust, and I think there's a great deal of trust between this board and the elected people. And so I think that that's, I think it's really not a problem. And because, you know, I, at this point, I will, the way that this resolution is at this point, I will not be voting in favor of it, though I, I, I think we need some, some more safeguards. So that's where I am at this point, so.
Okay. Further comment for the discussion, for the points of Commissioner Gross, proceed.
I guess I have a question for Treasurer Nash. If this resolution passes, will the ERP Administrative Committee need to take any actions to facilitate complying with requests?
Yeah, well, each individual module lead is going to need to reformat, reprogram, restructure permissions. If that answers your question.
Feel confident that it probably will be done in thirty days?
I, I think so. I welcome, if you'd like, Cindy Urbanas, I think, is on. Now she would be another module lead that we need to touch permissions. So I, I welcome her input if thirty days is. I would suspect so, but you're welcome to ask Cindy as well.
Cindy, can you give us an answer? Do you think thirty days is practical?
Commissioner, I am currently working with Christine Wood, who is the ERP administrator for the county. And we're working with Tyler because as Jenny mentioned, it's not just a simple thing as either granting access or even creating a new role. The attachments and the data are attached to each other, so we are currently working on that. Once we're able to figure out how to do it, I think it'll be a lot quicker, but at this point right now, we're not, we have not determined a way that we can accurately restrict access to the financial data, the transactions and the attachment. So we're working on that. So thirty days, I, I don't have an answer for you. I really don't know how long it's going to take.
In view of that, I would at a minimum, I guess it would suggest our county treasurer is, as April first approaches, if this thing is not ready to fly, let us know as soon as possible.
Understood.
Just Commissioner, thank you. Domus?
Madam Treasurer, you sent out an inquiry to eighty four counties. You got forty seven responses?
Sent it out to eighty three counties, got forty three responses, forty three responses.
Forty three?
Correct.
And all forty three of, only forty three?
Yes.
And all forty three of them indicated that they did not give this sort of.
All forty three indicated their Board of Commissioners do not have login access to their general ledger software.
Which is really what you're talking about.
Yes. Well, they have no access at all. Now Livingston Commissioners, you have access. You see the entire general ledger. So in all other forty three counties that responded, they So in all other 43 counties that responded, their commissioners do not have any sort of access to their general ledger software.
You think that's, they must have had some reason for doing it that way?
Yes.
I wonder, I wonder if maybe they went through the same thing that we're kind of going through here. It's just a guess, but.
It is that way because in a financial software, you don't give access beyond what is needed day-to-day, yes, to do your job on a day-to-day basis. So in most cases, those boards, well, in all of those cases, in all 43, those boards are relying on their financial folks and their elected officials to provide the information to them. And that way they are limiting the risk to their software.
And if that system were in place here, do you think any commissioner would be denied information that he or she was looking for?
No, sir. And that was the process until we got Munis in 2013. Prior to Munis in 2013, that's the only way commissioners could get information, was we didn't have a robust ERP system. So, reaching out to your electives, to your financial folks, that was the way in which information was shared.
Well, as I, as I indicated, it's just possible that, that the 43 of them ran into the same issue that we're dealing with today. And, but again, it's, maybe, maybe it's not, so, well, only time will tell. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Gross, then Commissioner Nakagiri.
Don't leave yet.
Just a point of clarification on my part. You just stated that all of us have access.
Yes.
But, but we don't have access to absolutely everything.
True.
Which is the reason why we're having this conversation on this particular resolution, because a commissioner wants to have information that is currently not accessible to us. We have limited access through, through Munis. And so what we're talking about is, at this point, is going beyond that.
And really what the full access language gives you is really the paper attachments to the transactions themselves. So the paperclip type. You know, I used the email message as my analogy. The financial transaction is the email and the paperclip attachment is the full access that you would be gaining.
One more point of clarification.
By the way. And this was a point I made last week, the fam committee, in the fourth whereas. The statement is made while many Livingston County staff have been provided with full access to all the information stored in our ERP system. The use of the word many is an error. In fact, there are only 10 people who have full access to the ERP system. Those are people whose jobs dictate that they have said access. I have not offered an amendment to change that, but I do point it out to my colleagues.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Helsman.
I was surprised. We had a, I think, a nice conversation this afternoon. I was surprised when you said you thought we could do it. I can't remember, they said 30 days or a month. You know, to me, to me, in the conversation that we have and, and what you've been giving forward to, what you've been talking about, that, you know, is, is still 30 days, is that a number that you still stick with? Is that, you know, is, do you think that that was the right figure? Or say, what, what will it take to get this done in 30 days or a month, whatever?
Well, I, I, I think 30 days, and we'll report back if we run into any challenges along the way. You know, I, I was accused of delaying in getting this going. And so I, I don't want to further hold up. If this is the will of the board, I don't want to further hold up the access that has been requested. So we, we will work diligently within 30 days and we can report back if we encounter obstacles.
So, okay, because that, you know, the, my amendment that I had wanted to do was to give us, you know, three or four months, I thought.
We will take more time.
Well, yes, but, but, and that we would have a monthly update given to us as to how this is going. In, in my mind, that, you know, that is, I, I think we needed to give our, you know, in my mind, this is a big change to our system. And, and to allow time. I know some people think it's, it is a click, in some ways, it's only a click of a switch. But, but I, I'm favorable of giving more time and not making April 1st a deadline date. You know, that's. So anyways, that's.
Commissioner Nakagiri and then Commissioner De.
Question for our Treasurer. With respect to the general ledger, you know, there are elements, you know, when I'm in the general ledger, that you click on and says author, you know, you're not authorized to see everything that's in the general ledger. That getting, does it make the process of providing full access easier to say, you know, if we did this in two stages? One is to provide access to these, for lack of a better term, I'm going to call attachments, or anything that is a link into the general ledger, to do that first and then have a longer timeframe for the, for the other stuff. Could you comment on that?
If I understand correctly, you would, you're, you're asking if we could give TCM access first. TCM would be the attachments. So the attachments access first or vice versa?
Yeah, I don't know if I, when you say TCM, I'm not sure, but, but I, I, there are, if you're in the general ledger and you want, and a commissioner or anybody wants to see what the full story is and what happened, you know, what, what the transaction are, there are links in there that, when clicked on, it says not authorized. So, I don't know if that's TCM or something else, I, you know, I.
I don't know either without looking at what you're attempting to click on.
Commissioner Nakagiri. What, when you and I were looking at Munis, it was TCM. Just, just so you know that, that when it said that you did not have access, it was to TCM.
Okay. So, in, in, as, as the author of the resolution, I'd be comfortable breaking the, the timing of, you know, the implementation into two sections, you know, the TCM and then otherwise.
So I don't think it would be possible to give you the TCM access without first giving you all other access needed. So, it, it's, it's a layered system. Cindy, correct, you know, jump in if you disagree, but I can't see the ability in the system to give you TCM access without giving you everything else related to the transaction.
That, that's the same problem that we are having in the, going the opposite way, way with restricting access to the attachments without restricting access to the financial transaction data. That they're tied together.
Okay, thank you. I, you know, a couple more comments. In, in the commentary that the Treasurer read from, you know, one of the 43 counties, some, one of the respondents was concerned about making a mistake, you know, that we have more people in there, that a mistake could be made. I, I want to reiterate, this is read-only access. We, you know, you cannot make a mistake. The other was, and I wrote this down, and I, so I believe this is a quote, you know, this Munis is the basis, quote, basis on which we make all of our finance decisions, which I think is, if that's a true statement, the Board of Commissioners with ultimate responsibility to the voters on establishing the budget and oversight of the budget and being held accountable to the voters, I, I, I think it's critical that we have access that, so we can see everything that's going on. The last thing I want to comment on is the view that, you know, we're getting into the weeds. I, I disagree with that point of view. The, and I'll use this as a case in point. The claims and payables that we approve every month that we look at as a Board of Commissioners and vote up or down, and I've never heard one get voted down. Those could be an expense report submitted by an associate for $50 that has been viewed by their supervisor, approved, that has also been viewed by Financial Services and approved. And then it comes, so, you know, we, we have a track record here of overseeing work that other people are, have already done. In fact, layers of other people. And, and then, for a $50 expense report, you know, versus some of these attachments, the, that are in Munis that are hundreds of thousands of dollars, that it says transfer in or transfer out. That's, that's the description. It wouldn't, we would be, I would be unsatisfied, I think most of my colleagues would be unsatisfied if these financial records that we approve, the claims and payables say, transfer out. That's, that's all of the description that you get. To me, that is not doing right as well as we could on behalf of the taxpayers and the citizens of Livingston County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And it's now turn of Commissioner Deaton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Treasurer, who has our ERP sustainment contract?
It's Tyler Technologies.
And Tyler Technologies, do they have the wherewithal and the technical capabilities to mirror these 10 folks' accesses for the commissioners?
Well, once we create one role, once we establish what the role needs to, to look like in order to give the access, then we can, yes, assign it to all commissioners. So we're not creating individual roles for each one of you. We create one role ideally in each module and then assign that to each of you. So we don't need Tyler Technologies to copy the role, is what I'm saying. Our module leads are fully capable. What we don't know fully is that we can actually get the software to do what we're saying we want to do. Which is give, oh, go on.
No, so there's, Commissioner Gross pointed out that there's 10 folks in our county that have what we're asking for. And Tyler Technologies, if they could handle doing our sustainment, they would be able to mirror those accesses relatively quickly, as opposed to us requiring non-IT people doing it.
Well, we don't have our IT, we don't have our software vendors touch our system and create roles. So our module leads will be handling the permissions within the system. We don't allow our software vendors to, to give permissions in the system.
Thank you.
Welcome. Commissioner Smith and then Commissioner Gross. A couple of quick questions. When we installed this ERP system, was there training for the employees on use?
Yes.
And, and how how much training? Was it a two-hour module? Was it a series of eight modules? Was it a, was it a series of trainings per module in the ERP system?
The training was in-depth when we went live with Munis. We had module user group meetings monthly. And if you were an AP module user, you would go to the AP user group meeting. If you were a reseating user, you went to the reseating user group meeting. It was intensive. Munis takes a lot of training to actually become skilled.
The, the resolution proposed the first, therefore be it resolved, the Livingston County Board of Commissioners directs all elected officials and county staff to take all necessary steps to provide all commissioners with full access to the financial records of our ERP software, yada, yada, yada. That, my colleague said read-only access. Full access does not imply read-only, in my mind. Is that how you interpreted this?
That's how, I know that's the intent of the resolution is for read-only, but you're, you're correct. Full access, I would agree, the terminology is subject to interpretation.
And is there any language in here that talks about training? I don't think, I must have missed it if I did. I apologize. I don't see anything in there about training, I mean, how to use the system. I have a, obviously, you know, I have no interest in approving this. This is, this is bad governance, period. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go on a little tirade here, so apologize and please don't take offense, but to throw a couple of bad analogies out. We elect a president every four years and that president has certain executive powers. There's an old maxim. He who governs least generally governs best. So when we have elected officials like a president that issues hundreds or thousands of executive orders, has the authority to do it, but should they do it? If we already have read access to the general ledger and accounts payable, why are we doing more? I, I have yet to hear an answer as to why on earth we are doing more. And I, I would hope that whoever takes advantage of this, should it be approved, at least takes some level of the training before they jump in. Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one, one clarification to make. It was pointed out just a few moments ago that when you go into Munis and you get into a certain level, you get a message that if you're, if you're desirous of determining what is a transfer in or a transfer out, you're restricted. And, and my take on that is, okay, I will call a department head and I'll ask them what that is. Or I will call a financial person. What is this transfer in? What is this transfer out? As I alluded to earlier and spoke about last week, there are other options available to secure detailed information on anything that's included in our financial systems without opening up the whole general ledger. That's enough for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Fiani.
I just simply wanted to point out for clarification purposes that under the sixth whereas, the term full access is defined as read-only access. the term full access is defined as read only access.
So noted. Any further comment or question? I will be the last word then. I'm happy to see that the document distributed by our county administrator Nathan Burr to everyone of a February 27th page and a half letter signed by our two chief judges, Judge Hattie and Kavanaugh, concluded by saying, please amend, essentially concluded by saying, amend it to make it clear that the court's financial records are specifically excluded. I think we have accomplished that request from them by our additional resolved clause. And so if anyone had a difficulty that the courts were going to be unhappy, it seems like the courts will be happy with what we've done. With that stated, I'm going to make, I'm going to call for our final roll call vote on the resolution as amended. Madam Clerk, floor is yours.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
No.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
No.
Commissioner Helserman.
No.
Commissioner Domas. And Commissioner Sample.
No.
Motion fails.
Includes that resolution. We are now to item number 13 on our agenda entitled Accounts Payable Reports A and B. Claims dated February 27, 2023. Payables dated February 4 through February 17, 2023. May I have a motion? Move to approve. Both?
Yes.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
There's been a second by Commissioner. You've got them both. Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, voice vote. Kindly say aye.
Aye.
Nine to zero unanimous on both 13A and B. Item number 14, call of the public. This is a two minute call of the public for anyone wishing to bring us information on any topic. And at about 15 seconds left, we'll have a signal that you should wrap things up.
I do not have any cards for this.
Anybody that would like to call the public in the room despite no card? Seeing none, anybody on Zoom?
I do not see any commissioner.
Thank you. Neither do I. So we will close call to the public. Having no participants this evening on item number 14. We're at item number 15 on the agenda. May I get a motion to adjourn? So move Helserman.
Second sample.
Moved and seconded. I'll waive discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nine to zero unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you.